When I became governor in January of 2010, people were leaving from every corner of our state to go to places like Pennsylvania and Virginia, North Carolina and Florida. Our state had reached a point of real desperation. We needed to do some radical things differently. Dug out of the hole. Now we have to move the state and its people forward. Because I believe that if we give you some economic relief, help support your families, to put food on the table, if we can make our education system better for everyone, if we can change our criminal justice system, then we're going towards a place we can be proud of. Sometimes you may look at me and think I'm spoiling for a fight. Not all the time. But I tell you this, I'm gonna fight for the things that are worth fighting for. My mother used to tell me all the time, Christopher, be yourself. Because if you are, then you're not gonna have to worry tomorrow about remembering who you pretended to be yesterday. So ladies and gentlemen, this is it. What you see is what you get.
Ladies and gentlemen, Governor Chris Christie.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you. Thanks for having me up to Sussex County. I'm happy to be back. Happy to be back. You know, I get a chance as governor to travel all over the country and part of my job, I think, is to explode some of the myths about our state. You know, some people who travel here, you know, the only thing they do is maybe land at Newark Airport. Now, they see those two or three miles on the New Jersey Turnpike as they head to New York City or to Newark. And I try to explain to them how incredibly beautiful this state is. And I've just come up with a new idea as I was on my way up here, was next time I have somebody from Washington or from some other state who doesn't believe me, I'm gonna take them on the ride I just took from my hometown of Memphis to here. Because this is one beautiful part of our state. And I really appreciate all of you having me up here today and let me talk to you a little bit about the things that I think are important and then also just hear from you, what's on your mind and what you think is important. Let's start with this. When I get back from Sussex County today, back down to Trenton, I'm gonna go down and sign the budget. And I'll tell you that it's, this budget is the next big step in what we've been trying to accomplish over the last four years. And here's why. First, the budget that I'll sign this afternoon spends less money, real dollars, less money, than we spent as a state in fiscal year 2008, six years ago. That means that for all four years that I've been governor, we have spent less money, less money than they were spending six years ago in the Corzine administration. So that's good news for everybody. But you know, at the same time, at the same time, we're doing things more responsibly. You know, the majority, the overwhelming majority of the increase in the budget this year has been for two things. To make the pension payment to our state pension system and to increase school aid. That's been the overwhelming majority of the increase that you see in this year's budget. And while I don't like to see budgets increase at all, the fact is, if we're gonna spend more money, we have to do it in a way that's responsible and it's to secure people's futures. And that's what those two things do. One is to make responsible payments to the pension system so that those folks who are relying on that pension system and who now because of the reforms that I fought for and all the legislators that represent you up here fought for, those folks are paying more money into the pension. The retirement age is higher. The penalties for early retirement are greater. And cost of living adjustments have been suspended. All because we knew we were getting ready to drive off a fiscal cliff. Well, if you're asking those employees to make those contributions and to make those sacrifices, then we have to play our part too as the taxpayers and we have to start paying into it. And so we're making a $1.7 billion payment into the pension fund this year in this budget, the largest ever made by any governor in the history of the state. And our aid to schools across the board this year is more than it's ever been in the history of the state. And so when I ran four years ago and I said I was gonna make government less expensive and they said, "Well, how you gonna do that?" I said, "Well, I'm gonna spend less." And they said, "Well, that's not specific enough." I'm like, "I don't know, it seems specific enough to me." And here we are. They said that wasn't possible, but here we are, not just in the first year, but four years later, still spending less than my predecessor was spending six years ago. And I said I was gonna make government smaller. I said, "Well, how you gonna do that?" And I said, "Because I'm gonna shrink it. I'm gonna get it done. We're gonna make the cuts we need to make to make it smaller." As we stand here today, there's over 5,000 fewer employees in state government today than the day I took the oath of office. And over 30,000 fewer government employees at every level of government than the day I took office. Government had gotten too big and too bloated. And the only way to shrink it is to choke off its money source. And that's what we've done through the 2% cap and other things, is to choke off the money source for them to grow. And so when you look at the things that we talked about four years ago, when I was wandering around the Sussex County Fair with Steve Oraho and Allison McHose and all the rest of the group and Gary Chiasano, all the folks that we talked to that day were telling me like they were just fed up with the size of government and the cost of government. And I told them that if I got elected, I would change that. And we have. And we've done that because we've stuck to our principles. We've stood up for the things that we believe in. And it doesn't mean we're gonna agree on every issue. You know, and it doesn't mean that we have to be enemies with the other side. Now, I think you've all seen me take on Democrats in a pretty direct and open way. I'm fighting them now and I'll keep fighting them until I take my last breath in this business. But in this state, for whatever reason, the people of the state have decided to have divided government for the last four years. A conservative Republican governor and a Democratic legislature. Well, I made a pledge to myself when I won with that legislature that I was not going to permit New Jersey to become Washington DC, where everybody just yells and screams at each other. They put out their press releases. They thump their chests and they get nothing done for you. My job as the governor is to make sure that I find ways to bring common ground between the two parties. If I'm waiting for the leadership of the legislature to do that, I'll be waiting for a long time. They're not gonna lead. It's my job to do it. It's my job to do it. And so in each and everything that we've accomplished over the last four years, by definition is bipartisan. Because they have the majority in the legislature. So I can't get anything passed. No matter how hard, you know, Gary worked, no matter how hard Steve and Allison and Parker worked, it doesn't matter. We only got 32 out of 80 in the Assembly. We only have 16 out of 40 in the Senate. So we can yell and scream all we want, but we need to get things done. Find Democrats on the other side who are right-thinking on a certain issue and are willing to compromise with us. And that's fine as long as we don't compromise our principles. And I have always believed that there's a boulevard that exists between compromising your principles and getting everything that you want. I wake up every morning with the secure knowledge that I'm not gonna get everything I want. It's a comfort in a way. Because I don't have to worry about it anymore. I know I'm not gonna get everything I want. And that's before I leave the house in the morning. And that's... With a wife and four children, you know that you're not getting everything you want. But when I get to Trenton, I know the same thing. And so I've gotta figure out a way to make this work. You see, you didn't hire me to win a debate. You didn't hire me to allow government to drift while all you hear in the background is the noise of people screaming at each other. That's not what you're paying for every day. You're paying for a government you hope more times than not will make progress for you on the issues that you care about. And I know we look at Washington DC right now and we shake our heads in wonder at a president who can't figure out how to lead at a Congress that only 11% of the people in the last poll I saw approve of the job they're doing? And my only mystery in an 11% job approval for Congress is who are those 11%? Right? Who are those people who go, "Yeah, I think that's working pretty good. I like the way that's going." I'm astonished it's 11. But it's a testimony to what's happened to our national government. And that's what happens when you don't have a leader at the top. That's what happens when you have someone in the executive office who is more concerned about being right than he's concerned about getting things done. And I'm not gonna be that kind of leader of New Jersey. Yeah, I wanna be right. But my main job is to get things done and to use the persuasive powers I have to do it. This budget I'm gonna sign later today is an example of that. Is it everything I want? No. But it's about 99% of what I want and what I can get at the moment. And you know what? That ain't bad for a conservative Republican in a state like this. So we gotta get our mindset in the right way. Now, the legislature really messed me up yesterday. Yesterday was supposed to be their last day. They were going home. That's what I call the joyful time in Trenton. Alright? And the legislature goes home and I get to go to work every day and just run the government and not have to worry about all the other stuff that I have to deal with. But unfortunately, because lots of people were fighting with each other yesterday and I was out of the State House, I know Steve knows this. You know, I tell people this all the time. When I'm out of the State House, when the legislature's in session, I say, "I have to get back there because right now at the State House, there is no adult supervision. I gotta get back." And yesterday was kinda unavoidable. You know, I went to a funeral yesterday morning. I went to Trenton for about three hours. And then it's my daughter's 10th birthday yesterday. So if I gotta choose between being with the legislature or being with Bridget on her birthday, I'm with Bridget on her birthday, right? So... So I must've gotten, I'm not kidding you, 13 or 14 calls while I'm trying to do Bridget's birthday of the shenanigans that were going on in my absence yesterday. And finally, after about the eighth or ninth call, Bridget turned to me and she said, "Dad, what are they doing down there?" And I said, "Bridget, I ask myself that every day." And she said, and this is great, and this is when you know you have a child who has only lived her life with her dad being in public life. Bridget's my youngest child and she was born in 2003 while I was US Attorney. So for Bridget's entire public life, her entire life, I've either been the United States Attorney or the governor. And none of my other children would say this, but Bridget would. And when I said, when I kidded with her, I asked myself that every day. She looked at me, she goes, "Dad, if you have to leave and go to Trenton to take care of them, don't worry, go ahead." I said, "Hell no, honey, I'm not going anywhere near that place." But what they did, they messed me up. They messed me up because now they gotta come back in two weeks to finish their work. So I wanna come back next week because it's 4th of July week and then, you know, people have vacations planned. So they're coming back on July 8th to finish a really important economic incentives bill that we wanna get done to help drive private sector job growth. And I hope to finish a bill to streamline the governance at Rutgers so that we can get good governance at Rutgers at our state university. That'll make us proud and not governance that makes us shake our heads for the investment that we're making and for our students who go there. And hopefully that's it. They do those two things and then skedaddle for the rest of the summer. Because then we get to engage in a public discussion about what's been done and what hasn't been done. And the biggest thing that I haven't been able to accomplish is to cut income taxes. Now, I've been proposing to cut income taxes now for two years and the Democrats have every excuse in the world not to do it. First, they didn't like my tax cut. Then I agreed to theirs. That messed them up. Then when I agreed to theirs, they said, "Well, we don't have the money to do it." Then I showed them we did have the money to do it. And they said, "Well, we don't trust the way you do math." And I, "Okay, well then, how about this? I'll give you the unilateral right without my signature to stop my tax cut anytime you think that the math is wrong." And they won't even do that. See, what it tells you is they don't want to cut taxes. They believe they can spend your money better than you can. That is a fundamental difference, a principal difference between the two parties and something that I want us to get resolved on November 5th when you go in the polls to vote. And the second biggest thing I haven't been able to get done, again because of the Democrats now in the state senate, is to change our Supreme Court. I have nominated now two for five extraordinarily qualified people. Only one of them has gotten confirmed. Two of them have been turned down at the committee level and two of them have now been sitting there for seven months. And the Democrats in the senate won't even give them a hearing. Not even a hearing. And in fact, the Democrats who have spoken on the record have said how enormously well-qualified they are. In fact, one of them, Judge Baumann from Monmouth County, they've already voted to confirm him as a judge once. Now all of a sudden, they don't wanna give him a hearing. Here's why this is important to you and especially important to people here in Sussex County. I wanna change the way we fund schools. It is unfair. It is unfair that of the $9 billion that the state government is gonna send to school districts on school aid this year, that 63% of that money goes to 31 districts. And then 37% of that money goes to the other 557. And I tried to change that two years ago. And the Supreme Court slapped me down and ordered me to send another $500 million. Imagine that. The Supreme Court, seven people in black robes who nobody elects, told me and the state legislature how to spend your money. Think about that, how crazy that is. Because if someone wandered up here from the Supreme Court to Vernon and you saw him over at the shopping center, you know, strolling with their cart through the A&amp;P and you went up to him and said, "Hey, you know, I don't like what you did with the governor on the school funding stuff. Could you explain why?" They'd say, "I'm sorry, I'm a Supreme Court Justice. I can't talk to you about it." And you said, "Yeah, but wait a second. You spent $500 million of my tax money the way you wanted to. Don't you think I deserve an explanation?" And they'd say, "I'm a Supreme Court Justice and I can't talk to you about it." See, this is the problem with letting unelected judges make decisions like that. See, if you don't like something that Oraho does or something that Allison does or Parker does and you see them in the A&amp;P, I mean, they can't tell you, "I'm sorry, I'm a state senator. I can't discuss that with you." Because you will throw their rear ends out to the curb at the next election. And rightfully so. You wanna make decisions? You need to stand by those decisions and explain them to the people that are paying the bills. And so we need to have a fight over the Supreme Court, everybody. And I need to get you all engaged. Because let me tell you, it'll make a huge difference up here in Sussex County if we distribute school funding equitably. It will mean millions of dollars for Sussex County property taxpayers. And right now, you should, you don't get it and you should. And what this'll lead to? Lowering income taxes and lowering property taxes across the state by equitably distributing school aid. And we only can do that by changing the Supreme Court. It will lead to the third thing we have to continue to do. And that is create private sector jobs in the state. Now, fortunately, yeah, I'm all for that. Fortunately for us, because I think of the policies we've pursued and because of the hard work of the people in this state, over 145,000 private sector jobs have been created in New Jersey since I was sworn in as governor. 145,000 families who now have someone in their home who have a job who didn't have it before. Helping to put food on the table, pay the mortgage, put a little bit aside, hopefully, for their kids. That's what's happening now. But it's not, I'm not satisfied yet. We still have to get more people back to work. And the way to do that is to lower taxes in the state and make our state more competitive. And we have a moment right now where we can do this because New York's taxes are going up. And that's our main competitor for the good, high-paying jobs that we have in this state. And if we now took the step of lowering our tax burden, there would be people who'd come streaming across the border from New York to New Jersey to pay lower taxes, bring their jobs and their businesses here and help to put even more people back to work. This is common sense. Yet I have Democrats in Trenton over and over again who say to me, "People don't decide where to start their businesses or where to live based upon taxes." And I'm like, "I don't know what world you live in." But here's the world they live in. The world they live in is the world that says, "I can spend your money better than you can. I know better for you. I'm gonna take care of you, don't you worry. Just send me your paycheck and I'll spend it for you." Now, this again is one of those fundamental differences between the two parties that will be battled out in the upcoming four months. Because remember, this year, not only is the governor's race at the top of the ballot, but also we're electing the entire state legislature, all 120 seats at the same time. This only happens every couple of times in a cycle. So we have an opportunity to really send a message. Which philosophy do you believe in? Do you believe that income taxes should be lowered? Do you believe that school funding should be more equitable? Do you believe that the jobs that we should create in this state are not government jobs but private sector jobs for people? If you believe in those things, then there's a clear choice to make. And the good news is, the good news is you're gonna have a chance. Unlike the Supreme Court, you get to vote for who you wanna vote for, for the legislature and for governor. And what I'm gonna spend the next four months doing as governor is talking about these issues. Talking about these issues and in terms of making our state a place that has a better quality of life. And that better quality of life begins with empowering families. Giving them more of their own money to spend. Letting you make the decisions about where your children should go to school. Let you make the decisions about how to spend your money and how to invest it. Not me. I'll do the things I need to do as governor. Protect the health and the safety of the people of the state. We will do the things we need to do to fund a quality education for our children and have a great public school system. We'll make sure we have hospitals that are well-funded and that will treat anyone who is ill who comes to the door. We will do those things because that's what a civilized society does. But it is time to make a choice about whether you want government to only do those things which are necessary or whether you want government to do everything it wants to do. That's the choice. And that's the things, those are the things that we'll be talking about. So I am now going to get to the fun part of the program. The speech is over. So here's what we're gonna do. There are four rules for the Christie Town Hall meeting. And by the way, today is my 109th Town Hall meeting since I've been governor. And I started doing this because, you know, when you're governor, you travel around in a bubble. You know, I never go in the front door of any place. I walk through more kitchens than you'll ever walk through in your entire life. All of a sudden, I'm in a dark stairway. I'm walking up, I'm through a hallway, I'm through a kitchen. I greet all the cooks and the waiters and the waitresses. And then all of a sudden, I walk out to a room and there's 1,000 people in the room like there is today. That could be unreal. Exactly right. You know, it's like, you know, you wouldn't wanna see me as a rock star, but let me tell you, you don't want me to start singing today. I can guarantee you that. But here's the thing, you don't get to interact with real people. You don't get to hear from them. And so I said to my folks when I started as governor, the worst thing that can happen to me is to become isolated and to live in the world of the black Suburbans and the state troopers and the only talking to political people. So we gotta figure out a way to get me out there and field real questions, unscripted questions, from real people. And this is what we came up with and I like it. And this is number 109. So here are the four rules. The four rules that have always applied to all 108 before this one and apply today. Rule number one, raise your hand and I will call on you. Please do not yell out questions. I do not answer yelled-out questions. So you will be yelling in vain. Rule number two, is someone will come to you with a microphone. I've got guys running around here. This is a pretty big spot, so be patient. There'll be guys running around here with microphones. They will give you the microphone. So don't start asking your question. Even if I can hear it, if you're close to me, not everybody else can hear it. So I want everybody to hear it. Wait to get the microphone and then tell me your name and where you're from. So I don't have to say, "Hey, you in the blue shirt." I can actually call you by your name. Well, good, "Hey, you in the blue shirt." So three, rule three is really less of a rule than it is a bit of advice. When you get this microphone in your hand, you are gonna feel an indescribable but undeniable gravitational-like pull to make a speech. And believe me, take my word for it, okay? So now, here's the thing. I'll listen to some of your speech, but, because I wanna hear from you. But we got lots of people here today. It's warm in here. I'd like to get to as many questions as quickly as possible. So if I start looking at you and going, "Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm." That means I get it. Please get to the question, okay? That's rule number three. Rule number four is this. I see there are some people here who have been to a Town Hall meeting of mine before. There are some familiar faces. We lovingly repeat to you, refer to you folks as the "repeat offenders." We like you guys. But for all those of you new here, But, for all those of you new here, you haven't seen one in person yet, but you may have seen excerpts on the TV news or on YouTube or heard them written about in the newspapers and you may have seen or heard about some of my more colorful interactions with my constituents. Here's the deal, there may be people in here today, I'm sure there are, because this is a great free country, who disagree with me on certain issues, and that's fine. And if I call on you and you have a disagreement, as long as you state that disagreement respectfully, you will get a respectful disagreement back from me. However, because we have these cameras back here and we have reporters writing things down that are being said and recording them, when that happens, sometimes people feel like this is their moment. Sometimes they feel like, "This is my chance to take the governor of New Jersey out for a walk." And I think you know what that means. In fact, I know in Sussex County you know what that means, right? And that's, you know, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it, but if you do, I want to remind you that for the purposes of this rule, we are all from New Jersey. All right? We are all from New Jersey. And what that means, so there is no ambiguity, what that means is, if you give it, you are getting it right back, all right? So let's go. Too damn hot in here to wear my jacket. All right, let's go with, I can't, I think it's a lady back there in the back row, yes, your hand is still up, stand on up, that's you, okay, he's coming right behind you. Thank you.
My name's Arlene Willis, I'm from Toms River, New Jersey. I have a question-
Toms River?
Yes.
Arlene, are you lost?
I have family here in Vernon.
Oh, okay. I was gonna get the troopers to get you back home, Arlene. Good God, what time did you leave, 3:00 AM, Arlene, to get here?
Uh, I have a question on the R-R-E-M program.
Okay.
I want to build a modular, and I'm not seeing where it's covered on any of the information that I'm reading.
Yep, here's, the R-R-E-M program, for those who don't know what it is, is rebuild, renovate, and elevate. Okay, so for the people whose homes were substantially damaged or destroyed during Hurricane Sandy, we have a program that allows them to either completely rebuild their home if they need to, renovate a home that's been partially damaged, or, and/or elevate their homes to new heights and flood levels. And they can get a grant of up to $150,000 to do that. Modular homes will be covered. What you're gonna see when you fill out the application, next they'll come to you when you get the grant, and they will give you options of builders to choose from, some of which will include modular builders. But we, what we want to do is pay the builders directly rather than give the check to you, and here's why. In Katrina, what happened with a lot of folks was, they got a $150,000 check and they left for Houston. Okay? And so what you have are huge swaths of New Orleans that are vacant now and will never be rebuilt. And the idea behind the program was to rebuild New Orleans. People got the $150,000 check and they're like, "Adios." So you don't see that modular option now, you will see the modular option when you get the letter to give you the grant to do your home, you've been approved, then there's gonna be lists of contractors that have been pre-approved by the state and pre-screened by the state that you can select from. And those folks will then, one, at least one of those options will be modular homes. But don't start on your modular home until you get the grant letter, because the federal government requires that you follow along their program. So if you start and then you're looking to get reimbursed, they're not gonna do that. So that's part of, we're from the federal government, we're here to help, you know, the money is nice, but the rules are crazy. So we will have, if you give your contact information to the gentleman who gave you the microphone, I will have one of the people from the Department of Community Affairs who's running this program call you directly, let you know what the modular situation's gonna be, but we are certainly gonna permit modular rebuilds to be part of the program.
Thank you very much.
And good luck getting back to Toms River. Nick is coming all the way around, so.
Hi, Governor Christie, my name is Renee, I'm from Highland Lakes here in Vernon. My question is-
There you go. Here are the people from the neighborhood, all right.
Under your leadership, medical marijuana in the state of New Jersey has been approved for dispensation, which, thank you. However, the federal government has been stepping on our neck threatening to pull federal funds as far as to my knowledge, if the dispensaries open and start giving out treatment. How are you going to fix that?
Well, it's not, my, my experience is not the same as yours.
Okay.
Okay? The Obama administration, the Obama Justice Department has been pretty hands-off on the states where medical marijuana has been approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. And to be clear, it was signed by Governor Corzine right before he left office, but it was left to us, it was literally the day he left office he signed it, so it was left to us to administer it. Right now, there's one medical marijuana, approved medical marijuana dispensary in the state, it's in Montclair. There're gonna be two more opening, one in Little Lake Harbor, I believe, and one in Woodbridge. And we have more that are available to be opened, but people have to go through a pretty rigorous regulatory process to prove criminal background checks and all the things that you would think would make sense to do. But I could tell you up to this point, we've had no interference from the federal government in our medical marijuana program at all. The other thing that's interesting to note is that it hasn't been nearly as in demand as people said it would be. There are fewer people who have signed up for the cards that you have to sign up for to be able to go to the dispensary with a prescription from your doctor to be able to get the medical marijuana. So I'm gonna be interested as we open more of these, whether there's really gonna be the demand for them or not. But the good news is that the federal government has left us alone, and as long as you're running a program that is compassionate and is treating real patients and not de facto legalization of marijuana, which, you know, I would just never be for, as long as you're doing it and you put the right controls on it, it's going fine here in New Jersey, and that's why we have the Department of Health running it. Because we want people to understand, this is a health program. This is not a, "Hey, I've got a headache, how about let's get high" program, okay? And that's what's happening in places like California and Colorado, who have so broadened this program that man, all you have to do, and I know this is happening, people are flying into Denver. They land at the airport, they go to downtown Denver where there are now numerous, numerous marijuana treatment centers. And guess what's right next door to the marijuana treatment center almost always? A doctor's office.
Yeah.
Right? And in Colorado, they don't have nearly the strict regulation we do. So you fly to Denver, you get off the plane, you go to the doctor next door to the marijuana treatment facility, and you say, "Oh, do I have a migraine from my flight and the only thing that solves my migraine, doc, is marijuana?" And he goes, "Well, you came to the right place." And you get your prescription, you walk right next door and away you go. We're not gonna turn New Jersey into that. So what we've tried to do is say this is a health program for people who have no other option and they're doctor-certified. We've tried other types of pain medication and treatment, it doesn't work, we believe based on evidence that marijuana will help them. I want those people to be helped. I don't want people to suffer and be in pain, but I also am not gonna let New Jersey become a place like Colorado and California where people are flying in just to get high. We got enough problems, we don't need to deal with that.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you did for us during Sandy, you were our hero.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I'm a Democrat and you've changed my mind.
There you go. Thank you. One at a time, ladies and gentlemen, one at a time. All right, all right, let's see. Let's go to the bleachers, because the bleachers are afraid they're gonna get forgotten. Gentlemen up there, under the Vernon sign. Although there's Vernon signs everywhere, so that probably wasn't the best, oh, in the best direction for my guys. You got it, go ahead.
My name's Nick Delwissio, I'm from Vernon. This is about the local economy. What are some things that'd be done to attract business to the area since Sussex County's so vast and there's a lot of land to develop, without overdeveloping and bringing jobs to the area so people don't have to commute, or maybe offering incentive to like small business to expand or people to open a business?
Well, it's, it's a really, it's a really good question that you're asking today, coincidentally, because Senator O'Rourke and I just yesterday were working together to fight in this economic incentives bill to make sure that there's a Highlands Development Region in that bill to encourage businesses to come and be right up here. And that wasn't in there before, and we need to have it in there, because we need to encourage businesses to come to all parts of our state, because people need jobs everywhere. And I don't want people having to commute two hours back and forth to work every day. And so if you live here in Sussex County, we've gotta figure out ways to do it. And I have to give great credit to your senator, he put his finger on this, he worked hard to get it done, he worked with me, it's in the bill, and I told him yesterday, "If you don't put economic development in for the Highlands Region, I will veto the bill." So it's in the bill. Thank you. All right, let's go to this lady right on the aisle here. Nope, nope, lady, you're definitely not a lady, I can tell. This, yep, right here.
Hi, Governor, my name is Hope Reiman from Highland Lakes also, in Vernon, and I'm really glad to follow his question, because I have read a great idea to bring 1,400 jobs to New Jersey as well as $102.5 million, and it comes with a great benefit of equal rights for all people under the law seeking gay marriage. Can you please address this issue of this economic disparity?
Sure. I'm, I've made, I've made my position really clear on this since I ran in 2009. I believe, I have believed before, and I still believe today, that the institution of marriage should be between one man and one woman. Now, I know there's great debate about this in our society right now, not only here in New Jersey, but across the entire country. And the events of the last few days in the Supreme Court have put an even greater spotlight on that. And so what I've said to the folks in the state that disagree with me and in the legislature who disagree with me is, put it on the ballot. If in fact, the people of New Jersey overwhelmingly want same-sex marriage, then they have the absolute right to vote for that on the ballot and amend the Constitution to permit it. And that way, I don't have to compromise my principles that I believe in, and someone else doesn't have to compromise theirs. And in the end, something like this, in my opinion, where you're looking to change a 2,000-year-old institution from its core definition, needs to be decided not by 120 politicians in Trenton and not by one governor, needs to be decided by all the people. Everyone should be able to have a voice on it. And so I've said I would be absolutely supportive of putting this on the ballot and up to a vote for all the people of the state, and then let the people decide. And I will, if it were to pass, I will enforce that law and uphold that new section of the Constitution with exactly the same vigor that I uphold every other law and part of the Constitution, which I'm sworn to do. But I also am not for political expediency, because right now this feels like the way the wind is blowing in our country. I'm not for political expediency, gonna change my mind on these type of things. And so I understand that that means that some people will disagree with me. But this is who I am, this is how I ran, this is who I told you I was gonna be. And the kind of interesting thing about the other party on this is, that they had a chance to do this in 2009, when they had a Democratic governor and Democrats completely in control of the legislature, and they refused to do it. At the same time, I'd already been elected and had said during the campaign that I would veto any bill that changed the status of traditional marriage. And so to me, this is much bigger than an economic issue. I know you raise economic statistics, people can argue this one way or another. To me, this is the changing of a 2,000-year-old institution, and if it's gonna be done, it shouldn't be done by nine men and women in black robes in Washington DC, it shouldn't be done by legislators, it should be done by the people of this state. Let them vote, and whatever they vote on, I'll support it.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
You have been very consistent and I do appreciate your, your views on this issue. I'm wondering, how is it different for people who are supposed to be represented by the legislature, who is bringing these to bear, and yet you, in your position, say no?
Well, here's how it's different.
And, and part B is, civil rights, civil rights cannot be a referendum issue.
Well, see, I don't-
No, sir.
Listen, you, you and I have a fundamental disagreement on that. I, I know that's what you believe, I hear you loud and clear, I don't. I believe it can be put on the ballot and should be put on the ballot, because this institution affects everybody in the state, everybody. The definition of this institution affects everybody in the state. And let me say, when you asked part A or B, whichever one it was before that, you know, the legislature does this when they feel like it, okay? We have an issue right now regarding the minimum wage, all right? So now, they want to increase the minimum wage. I say, "Fine, I'll increase the minimum wage." They want to do it $1.25 in one shot. Small business people have to pay $1.25 an hour more, every hour, without any ramp-up. I say, "Let's phase that in over three years." That's my offer of compromise. So I conditionally veto the bill and I send it back with the same level of increase, but ramped in over three years. They try to override my veto and they can't. So what did they do? It's on the ballot for November. They are gonna amend the Constitution, if it's successful, to put in a minimum wage at a specific dollar figure and, and a Consumer Price Index increase on the minimum wage every year for the rest of time. They're amending the Constitution to do that, here's why, 'cause they don't like my decision. So they're going around me, 'cause I don't have anything to do with amending the Constitution. That's something that gets passed by the legislature, sent right to the people. So they think it's okay to amend the Constitution to go around me, 'cause they don't like my decision on the minimum wage, but when they don't like my decision on same-sex marriage, they won't go around me. So it's more important to have the people, the people of the state to decide what the minimum wage is than it is for people to decide what the definition of marriage is in their state? They cannot have it both ways. If you want to put everything on the ballot, then go ahead and put everything on the ballot. You don't want to put anything on the ballot, but don't tell me that minimum wage is more important than the definition of marriage inside the borders of a state. And so my view is, fine, we want to, we want to conduct ourselves in that way, that's fine by me. And I've said all along that I think this issue is big enough and important enough, the definition of marriage, that the people of this state should be able to decide it. And so if they put it on the ballot for this November, the people will get to decide. If they put it on for next November, the people get to decide. And I think you have to ask yourself, if in fact, one of the arguments that they use to me all the time as to why I should sign this, is because they say, "The people of New Jersey want it. The people of New Jersey want it, Governor, look at the polls. The people of New Jersey want it." Okay. Prove it. Prove it. If, 'cause plenty of times polls are right and sometimes polls are wrong, okay? And I say, "Fine, put it on the ballot, let everybody have their argument and discussion about it in public, and then let people vote." And I don't know why the Democrats don't have confidence in the people of New Jersey to do what they believe is right. I do, and I know that if the polls are right, it's gonna be opposite of my opinion. But I'm still willing to trust the people to make that decision, even though I may disagree with their ultimate decision, I'm willing to trust them. The people on the other side of this argument in the legislature are willing to trust them to amend the minimum wage, but aren't willing to trust them to define what marriage should mean inside the borders of our state? I just don't think that that's consistent and I don't think it's right. So I know there are people who disagree with me, but here's the thing about me, everybody, that I think you've learned now over nearly four years, is I'm gonna tell you what I think. And if you are a single-issue same-sex marriage voter, if it is the, not only the most important issue to you, but the only issue that determines your vote, then you're gonna vote for the other person. And I'll live with that. But here's what I'm not gonna do, I am not gonna mealy-mouth issues to you, so you can't figure out which side of the issue I'm on, and then all of a sudden, you know, you just, you don't know what's happening in here. You have a right to know. So I respect your position, we, we have a fundamental disagreement about it, I'd like to see it resolved by all the people. Who knows how it's gonna be resolved? I don't know, maybe it'll be resolved by the courts, I don't know. But in the end, this is who I am, this is the position I hold, and I'm gonna hold to that position. But if the people of the state decide to change the Constitution, you can be assured that I will then enforce that law and uphold that part of the Constitution with exactly the same type of vigor that I'm sworn to uphold and enforce every other law and constitutional provision that we have in our state. And thanks for bringing it up, I appreciate it. Right on the aisle here, yes, sir.
Bill Gatler, Wantage Township.
All right.
About two weeks ago, you're quoted in the Star Ledger as having a problem with the League of Municipalities about municipal corruption.
I, I, I do.
Based on that, I sent a letter into you with copies of several letters we had sent to the Attorney General's Office about corruption in Wantage Township and Sussex County. Copies of our investigations are also attached.
Okay.
Wednesday, Star Ledger quotes the comptroller as having problems with attorneys and their bills, which are included in the stuff we sent into you. What do we have to do to finally get an investigation and something done about the corruption in Wantage Township and Sussex County?
Well, here's the deal, first off, I'll make sure that I see the things that you sent in and refer it appropriately to the Attorney General. You know my last job, I was the chief federal prosecutor for seven years, and we put 130 politicians in jail of both parties over seven years. So I don't think there's anybody who's sat in my chair who has a better record on going after corruption of both parties than I do. But that's not my job anymore. And I try to stay away from the prosecution stuff, 'cause you get politicians involved in prosecution, it's a bad thing in my view. So what I do all the time, and I get letters like yours all the time, I send them over to the Attorney General's Office and then I forget them. Because politicians shouldn't be involved in putting their thumb on the scale on prosecutions, prosecutors should do prosecuting. And when I was the prosecutor, I used to hate when politicians would be mouthing off in the newspaper or on TV about my investigations, which they knew nothing about. in the newspaper or on TV about my investigations, which they knew nothing about. Here's the thing I could tell you. You send something into a prosecutor's office, you may not hear anything about it for two years, but that doesn't mean something's not happening. Prosecutors work best quietly. Quietly while we're investigating. Qui- I say "we," while they're investigating. It's my old job, slip. Quietly while they're investigating, quietly while they're gathering facts, quietly while they're interviewing witnesses. And so, I will check to make sure that your letter has, that I read it, because I haven't read it yet, and that it's sent appropriately to the Attorney General's office. But I will also tell you that as Governor, I have never, nor will I ever, get personally involved in some type of prosecution, because I think that blurs the line. I've got good people at the Attorney General's office. You may have seen last week, the former Middlesex County Sheriff, who claimed to be innocent, pled guilty to taking bribes to hire people. That's my AG's office that did that. And he now faces nine years in state prison for what he's done. We're gonna be tough on the people that we can prove guilty, but I won't prejudge anything, and I won't get involved in it as Governor, because if I do, then I'm compromising my prosecutors. I have faith and confidence in those people. We'll check into what you've sent me, and I'll make sure it gets to Acting Attorney General Hoffman. And his folks, I can guarantee you, will pursue any case that has merit and investigated, and if need be prosecuted, no matter what political party's involved, and no matter what powerful person is involved. This guy was the chairman of the Middlesex County Democratic Organization and the sitting sheriff, the chief law enforcement officer of the county. We took him down in our AG's office, because he had done wrong. And if there's something happening in Wantage, in someplace else in Sussex County, if it's happening badly in Middlesex, or in Toms River, or anyplace else, we will go after it. Our AG's office will go after it and get it done. So we'll look into it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the lady up in the bleachers on this side. Yep. We don't want the bleacher people to think they have been forgotten.
Hi, my name is Susan Williams, and actually, you let me ask a question in New Milford.
Really? A twofer?
Second time only.
What do you got, Susan?
I'm a Democrat.
All right.
And actually, I'll tell you right up front, because I heard there was a lot of issue. I did step up to run for Assembly this time.
Okay.
And a lot of these people know me. And the reason I stepped up is not, I'm a, I don't consider myself a politician. I've got my three children here, and there are just lots of concerns I have. But the question I'm gonna ask right now is about taxes. I'm a Democrat. I don't want my taxes to go up either. So I just keep hearing that over and over, and I guess I just, you know, I need to say that. I have to pay a budget as well. But my question is, I just read, and this is an interesting thought, so I wonder what your thoughts are about this, that New Jersey is the second-highest property tax state in the nation, under, behind New Hampshire. And what I read is that we, as a state, use our property taxes basically to run the government, where in most other states, they use a sales tax, because that's more equitable for whoever's buying, they're all chipping in. And I wonder what your thoughts are about that.
Well, really, the property tax in New Jersey is used almost exclusively for one thing, and that's public education. The property tax in New Jersey, about two-thirds to 75% of the property tax in any particular town goes to their public education system. You all see it when you see your property tax bills, and you see the breakdown, right? So, we spend on the state level from income tax funds, about $9 billion, as I said earlier, on aid to school districts for public education. I think the number is close to another 30 that gets spent by property taxes in support of public education. So let me give you some sense of what you're talking about, if we continue to spend at the same level. The income tax this year will generate about $11 billion. The sales tax, significantly less than that. So if you wanted to say, take education out of the property tax, and just have the property tax run your municipalities and their costs, and your counties and their costs, if you wanted to do that, you have to find a way through state taxes to raise another $30 billion. We have one of the highest income taxes in the country already, and we, it raises 11. So, what you're suggesting, and some others have suggested it too, would be an enormous increase, enormous increase, in our income tax rates and our sales tax rates. And you'd have to do it using both, because you could never do it just with one. But we also have a 7% sales tax now, that is one of the highest in the country. Yeah. 7% sales tax is one of the highest in the country. The last time I checked, I think it's in the top 15, and it might be even the top 10 at this point, because some states have cut it. So the problem is, you can make the argument that you should raise the income tax significantly, and raise the sales tax significantly, and broaden the income tax, and expand the sales tax to cover more items, and that's what you'd have to do to get anywhere close to the number you're talking about that would be raised from the property tax. I think the solution on property taxes is, we have to start spending less. And what you've seen now, over the last two years, with the property tax cap at 2%, is last year, property taxes went up 1.7% in the state statewide. This year, property taxes went up 1.4% statewide. These are the lowest two increases in property taxes in over 24 years. Now, I won't be content until we put the car in reverse and property taxes start to get cut. But what did this was, telling school districts, telling municipalities, and telling counties, "You can't spend more than 2% more, and if you want to, you have to go to the people for a vote." And the people have to approve it, right? And guess what? In the two years or so since the cap has been passed, I believe there's only two instances where people have approved a higher tax increase. One of them was in Brick, and I forget where the second one was. So, my point to you is, you can make the argument, and some people do, I think we're so non-competitive with our current income tax and sales tax rates, that if you had to raise them to raise another $25 to $30 billion, we would be the most expensive income tax and sales tax states in the country. And I don't think that's where we want to head. I don't think that's gonna grow the private sector jobs I was talking to him about. I don't think that that's the right way to go. We need to spend less at the, at the property tax level. School districts have to spend less. Towns have to spend less, and counties have to spend less. That's what we're starting to do. And I'll tell you, in retrospect, I wish I had made a cap zero and not cap 2%. Because you know what? Everybody's surviving pretty well at cap 2%. They could probably do cap zero. Yeah, you got something else?
Yeah. The problem, as I see it, is that, I mean, just look at our households. We all have a budget to operate under.
Right.
It's X amount of dollars. Either we're going to make that X amount of dollars and pay for what we have to live, or if we have to, if we make less, we're gonna have to obviously do it without, which is basically what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I know the schools are a big chunk of the budget, but I guess I'm concerned how much we, we are willing to cut as a society in, in order to have still quality education, but also insofar as the, the sales tax. I travel to the middle of the country, because my husband's from Oklahoma, and they have like a 13% sales tax.
I didn't say we're the highest, but we're the top 15. Listen, I don't want to get in a debate with you, because we're not running against each other, but here's the thing.
I know, I know.
But here's the thing. You said, "I wonder how much we're gonna be willing to cut."
Yeah.
Right? We haven't cut anything yet. Listen to me. We haven't cut anything. We've restrained the growth to 2% a year. We haven't cut anything. We haven't even begun to cut anything at the school level. So, so the fact of the matter is, we can help to make this state better and more affordable in the beginning, just by restraining the growth. In the 10 years before I became Governor, property taxes went up 70% in 10 years. Since I've been Governor now, the last two years, they've gone up 1.7 and 1.4, right? We're making progress. We're not done yet, but we're making progress. And I just don't believe that we should be raising the income tax and raising the sales tax to pump more money into a system that I already believe spends more than enough, and spends it, as I mentioned off the top, inequitably. Inequitably. So that if you want better schools here in Vernon, and you say to the state taxpayers, "Listen, I want you to be part of that equation, because you benefit too, when kids are doing well in Vernon, the whole state benefits, right?" I can only give you a share of 37% of the overall pie that you divide with 557 other districts, because the Supreme Court of this state says, "I gotta give 63% of $9 billion to 31 districts." Who, by the way, if they were having off-the-charts achievement in those districts, we might say, "All right, well, it's worth the investment." In Newark, two years ago, the graduation rate, where we paid $24,000 per pupil per year, think about that now, 24,000 per pupil per year, the graduation rate was 23%. In Asbury Park, where we pay 30,000 per pupil per year, 30,000 per pupil per year, you could send any child in Asbury Park to the best private schools in New Jersey and not pay that much. Two years ago, less than 50% of the graduating class at Asbury Park High School read it at an eighth-grade level. And you're paying $30,000 per pupil per year. So let me just say, this isn't just about being a hard-hearted accountant, where I'm sitting and I'm counting the numbers. This is about, I am paying for failure. And I'm tired of paying for failure, and so are you. Guy with the cap on, right there. Yes, sir. Tie, cap, you got it. Hold on now. Oh, don't break rule two. Wait for the microphone. There he is, he's got it.
How you doing? I'm also a Democrat.
I mean, seriously. Wait, wait, hold on, just hold on for a second.
Irish-Italian.
Just hold on for a second. What's the percentage of Republicans and Democrats in Sussex? Right? Yeah, but what's the percentage? I mean, how the hell can I do this, right? I mean, seriously. I've been to, I've done a town hall in Irvington, right? I couldn't find a Republican for a 40-mile radius at a town hall meeting. I'm here, I got this Democrat, I got this Democrat, it's just unbelievable, and there was another one. No, where was she? Yeah, over here. I mean, someone, someone, I know I'm picking them, I don't know how the hell I'm doing it. It's unbelievable. I come to Sussex County, I figure I'm gonna get some Republican questions, hell no. And for the press sitting back there, for those of you who think this thing is fixed, it ain't. Look at this. I can't get out of my own way. Listen, and by the way, these Democrats who I picked today, you're the luckiest people in the world. Go to Atlantic City tonight and bet, would you? You're on a lucky streak. It's unbelievable. Yes, sir. Mr. Irish-Italian-American Democrat, what do you got for me?
Okay. My issue is that New Jersey Biz, which occasionally I write for.
Yep.
And, and obviously Bergen County. You just brought up Atlantic City. I started with the casinos, resorts, and Caesars. I developed some tests for them years ago. The issue was, it came out in the paper, Atlantic City, a casino, Bergen County. Sussex County is gated or stated to be for tourism. We need some kind of infrastructure that can bring those jobs up here. 25 to 40% of the jobs in this county, for the people that don't commute, are $10 or less. And those are not counting kids, those are adults. How do we get an infrastructure that actually makes tourism pay and makes work pay?
What kind of infrastructure are you asking for?
I'm asking...
Are you asking for a casino?
Babe, you came up here today.
That's what you're asking for, right? You're asking for a casino. I, listen, so, don't call a casino "infrastructure," okay? Infrastructure are highways, infrastructure are bridges, infrastructure, I mean, good Lord, a casino? I, seriously, where's my staff? We gotta get him the Trenton to English Dictionary that we like to use all the time, because sometimes I don't even know what the words mean anymore. Here's the deal, I'm gonna make it very simple for you. Two years ago, when we made the changes we made to Atlantic City, established a tourism district, and did some other investments in Atlantic City, I said at the time, "I'm gonna give Atlantic City five years to recover." Five years to get itself back up with exclusivity on gaming, for five years. We're now into our third year of that. If after five years, we see that Atlantic City either has not come back, or that it's come back vigorously enough that it could take competition inside the state, that I've said before, you know, that's the time to discuss that. But I am, I have made a five-year commitment to the investment that the people of this state have made in Atlantic City, and those private firms have made in Atlantic City. And I'm not gonna change that. I'm giving them five years to get their act together. And we're helping them, and we're supporting them, and doing other things. Because guess what? Everybody in, in, in every region of the state, for probably the first 20 years of casino gaming, benefited from what was going on down there, in a significant way. There was money spread all over this state. Every county was getting money from the revenue we were generating in Atlantic City when we were a monopoly. Well, monopolies are bad, everybody, because you know what happens to monopolies? They get lazy. And they don't invest in themselves, because they say, "Well, why do I have to make the casino look better? Why do I have to bring new attractions?" Because guess what? You've only got two places to go, Atlantic City or Nevada. So, everybody came to Atlantic City, probably from the Mississippi East, because there's no place else to go. Now that there's competition everywhere, with, because we didn't invest in Atlantic City, because it doesn't look the way it should, because it doesn't have the amenities that it should, people are going to other places that are more convenient. The day trippers rather go for, you know, a shorter drive in Pennsylvania than come to, to Atlantic City like they used to. So my, my answer to you is, see me in two and a half years. In two and a half years, I'll be willing to reconsider our entire gaming strategy, but it's gonna be based on what's happened in Atlantic City and the investment we've made there. But I'm not gonna short-circuit them. I told them I was gonna give them five years. I'm gonna give them five years, because I'm some, I'm a person of my word. And we're making an investment there, and I think things are starting to get better. But it's gonna take some time, and we'll see how it happens. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve a casino any place else, other than Atlantic City, in the next two and a half years.
Governor, Revel was a $1.6 billion expense.
No, it was not.
It was downgraded to 200 million.
But by the way, it's a $1.6 billion expense to who? To who?
This came...
Excuse, to who?
Who pays for the 200 million that we're in, we're in line for?
Excuse me, we haven't paid a nickel.
Well, what happened to $1.6 billion?
That's private investors. Private investors make investments, sometimes they win, sometimes they lose. But let's be very clear, because if you're running for the legislature, you need to get smart on this issue, okay?
I will.
Taxpayers have not spent one nickel on the Revel Hotel and Casino. The only way they get any tax credits, which is what you're referring to, is if they make money. They haven't made any money. In fact, as you point out, they've lost a significant amount of money. So there has not been a nickel of taxpayer money that's gone to the Revel Hotel and Casino. So, don't talk about our expense. It's not our expense. It is their expense. And the people who got that downgraded from $1.6 billion in equity to 200 million in equity, you know who lost that money? The people who, I'm not getting in a debate. You get two, that's it.
No, 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 it's not a debate.
No, 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 give the microphone back now. Give the microphone back. The people who lost that money were the private investors. Well, you know, private investors make bets all the time and how they invest. When they, that's why I believe the system is great. When they do really well, they make the profit. When they don't do really well, they take the losses. It's not us who take the losses, it's them who took the losses. All right? Let's see. That lady, right there. In, yep, you, you got it. Nick's coming behind you.
Thank you. Hello, Governor Christie. My name is Sally Rinker. I am a former mayor of Vernon and the president of the Vernon Taxpayers Association. Okay. First of all, I have a, a comment and a question. I wanna, I really wanna thank you for making us proud with how comfortably you worked with President Obama for Superstorm Standing. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know that there was some criticism from hardliners and...
As far as that goes, I'll let you get to your question. Let me just be really clear on that, everybody. I disagree with President Obama probably 95% of the time, okay? But here's the way I was raised, and here's the way I think most of you were probably raised too. There's one President of the United States at a time, okay? I didn't vote for him either time. I don't want him to be President, but one my choice. And when the storm hits this state and the President of the United States calls you and says, "I wanna come and see it and I wanna help," and he actually follows through on the promises that he made, then you have to say that on that part of it, he did a good job. That doesn't mean I like Obamacare, that doesn't mean I like what he's doing on taxes or spending or anything else. But here's the last thing. For the folks who are critical of that, let me just ask them. What would you have me do exactly? Okay? Seven million people out of power, the state leveled, the President calls and says, "I wanna come and visit and see it for myself so I can help you," and I say, "Yeah, no, I'm for Mitt Romney, I don't want you to come." Or would you have had me wear my Romney sweatshirt while I was walking around with him? You know? I mean, this is ridiculous stuff. This is what I was talking to you all about before at the beginning. You pay me to do a job. You pay me to do a job. And when you see the help that we're getting now from the federal government, the way it's helping to rebuild our state, the way we've got 22 of the 23 boardwalks rebuilt before Memorial Day, businesses up and running at the shore, people being taken care of, that's my job.
Yes.
So thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
What's your question?
Yes. And I, by the way, I am a Republican, but, and...
You know, it's like finding a penny on the ground. There's a finally, I mean, I'm like the only person in Sussex County who can't find a Republican, right? More Republicans here than anywhere, I can't find one. I gotta get to Wertz on this, this is not good work by you. All right, let's go.
Just closing on that comment, it was a great example for elected officials who put their office first before party politics. My question is, you stand strong for ethics reform and campaign finance reform. And given some of the recent happenings in the news, and the fact that, you know, super PACs and PACs do fund elections and end up being what we perceive as vendor PACs because they end up receiving a lot of the positions from, you know, getting elected officials in office, which has happened here in Vernon, I'd like to know where you stand today and what in fact could be happening in legislation, you know, as we speak on this issue.
Well, listen, I've said for three and a half years that I am willing to negotiate with the Democrats in the legislature comprehensive ethics reform and campaign finance reform. But here's the thing, I'm not, I mean, my wife gets mad when I use this kind of language here, but hang in for a second, I'm not a schmuck, okay? So here's the thing, what the Democrats want is they want all the rules to apply to people who generally contribute to Republicans, but none of the rules to apply to people who contribute to Democrats generally. Let me give you an example. Pay-to-play. Now, I favor pay-to-play reform, but here's the thing. Pay-to-play reform in New Jersey applies to businesses and individuals who have a contract with the state that's worth more than $17,000. That means they can't give to me more than $300, not to my opponent more than $300, not to the state parties more than $300, not to the legislative leadership committees more than $300. Okay, you might like that, you might not, but it's one of the rules. The public sector labor unions, doesn't apply to them. Now, they negotiate contracts with the state that's worth hundreds of millions of dollars, yet that doesn't apply to them. Why do you think that is? It is because of who wrote the law, right? The law doesn't apply to labor unions? Are you kidding? AFSMI, CWA, NJEA, go through the list, SEIU, these folks who represent public sector workers, they are allowed, and private sector workers, they're allowed to give with impunity, to give as much as they want. So here's my deal. My deal is, I am willing to have campaign finance reform that makes sense for everybody, either where everybody's ox is gored or where nobody's ox is gored. And if nobody's ox is gored, then there should be 24-hour disclosure on the internet. So if I take a check from somebody for my campaign, you can go on my website and see every day who I'm taking money from. And then, you can evaluate my conduct. You know, if I take a bunch of money from a particular industry, and then all of a sudden you see me two weeks later out there going, "You know, we should give tax breaks to this industry." You go, "Oh, okay, I think I know what's going on here," right? One plus one often equals two. But I'm not gonna be in a situation where I'm gonna allow them alone to define what fair is. I'll take care of our side, they take care of theirs, if we can come together, I'm happy to do it. And when we do it the next time, it should apply to everyone. Everyone. Every public office holder in New Jersey, whether you're a Board of Education member or whether you're the governor of New Jersey and everybody in between. And so if they wanna have that type of comprehensive campaign finance reform and ethics reform, if they wanna have everybody in state government fill out the same form I have to fill out every year, and you see it in the newspaper, man, you know every nickel I make, right? My wife loves that time of year because it's not only what I make, you get to know what she makes. And Andrew this year, who's 19 and had a job for the summer, we had to disclose what Andrew makes, right? So that's fine, I'm okay with that. You should know where I make money from while I'm governor, and where my family makes money from while I'm governor. But that doesn't apply to everybody. And so, I'm happy to get involved in it, I'm happy to talk to them about it, but the rules of the game are, everything's on the table. If everything's on the table, I'm happy to participate. If it's not, then don't bother me. Because if you wanna rig the game, then I'm not interested in playing a rigged game. That's where I'm at on this. Okay, now... I'm being told by my crack staff that I'm to last question. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but here's the, but here's the thing. Well, I will come back, you know I'm gonna come back, I mean, that's not... It's not even a question, I'm getting, I'm getting, yeah, no, it's okay. I love having these Democrats here, they keep me on my toes, that's good. All right, so I'll do one more. Now, for all of you have your hands raised, you know there's a lot of pressure on you if I pick you. Because all the other people who don't get picked, if your question is stupid, these people are gonna go, "Oh, you wasted the last question on that." I tell you, I like people who wear bold colors, that's a hint for the next town hall meeting. I like this dude right up here with the orange shirt. That's a bold color, let's bring it up to him for the last question. I, listen, I don't dislike green shirts, it's just the orange really stuck out at me. Go ahead, sir.
How are you, Governor?
Good.
My name is Mickey Clifford, I'm here behalf of Crystal Springs. We talked about infrastructure earlier, but I just wanna compliment you on having guts. This is the toughest state, the toughest people, and you've stood up to people, the small people, and you've represented the small people, and you stood up to the bigger powerhouses, and I admire you for that. Now, my question is, has a thought ever crossed your mind to run for President?
Right. No. No. Listen, first of all, thank you for the kind words, I appreciate that. I finally found a Republican. Took me to the last question. I finally found a Republican. He's a Democrat too? No, no. Listen, here's the thing. First of all, it's incredibly flattering, and I appreciate the suggestion, and I really appreciate the response. And I usually end up with this, but this is the last question, so instead of doing a big sum-up at the end, I'll sum up in answering your question. We are all who we are because of where we came from, all right? So, my Democrat friend back there, who's Irish and Italian, I have an Irish father, and I had a Sicilian mother. Yes. Now, for those people who are cheering, it's either because, you know, they know of someone who had a Sicilian mother, or they are still in stress over the fact that they had a Sicilian mother. And, you know, my father, who is 80 years old and comes to a lot of these town hall meetings, he's not here today, but he comes to a lot of them, and he's one of the most gregarious, outgoing, kind, wonderful guys you'll ever meet. And if he were here today and I leave, he would stay afterwards and talk to a bunch of you. O'Roh knows this, he hugs O'Roh all the time, you know, even when he doesn't wanna be hugged, he's hugging him. And he's just this wonderful guy. My mother, on the other hand, was a very tough woman. And in the, I say often, in the automobile of life, my dad was merely a passenger, my mom was the driver. Mom was the person who ran the house, mom was the person who made the rules, and mom was the person who enforced the rules. So let me tell you in answer to your question, my mom passed away nine years ago. And if she were here right now and she heard that question, beside being very proud of that and the reaction, she would look at me and say, "First things first, Christopher, first things first." She knew, and she used to tell me that as a kid, because she knew she had an ambitious kid on her hands. She could tell. You know, you all can tell kind of the personality traits, right? And so can I, of our kids from the time they're really little. And they change a little bit here and there, but not a lot. They can kind of tell who they are. My mother knew I was ambitious, and she was like, "First things first, do the job," and this is whether it was my homework, or later on when I was an adult and I was actually out working, she used to say to me all the time, "Do the job you have right now the best you can, and your future will take care of itself." I hear her ringing in my ears all the time when people ask me questions like that. I asked for this job four years ago, and I love every day of it. And I mean every day. There is not a day that I'm governor that I don't wake up in the morning and go, "Man, I am the luckiest guy in the world. I'm the governor of the state where I was born and raised." I'm incredibly lucky, right? So, I'm asking, I'm asking to keep that job. And I'm gonna work on this job as hard as I can for as long as I can to make sure I get it right. And a few years from now, I'm gonna need a new job, so who knows? I'm not gonna preclude anything in my future at all because I've got a 19-year-old, a 17-year-old, a 12-year-old, and a little girl, as you know, who just turned 10 yesterday. That means I'm working forever. Forever, it's never going to stop, right? I mean, so, I am thrilled that people think of me, that there's some folks who think of me in that way, that I would be up for that kind of task. I could tell you as a kid from New Jersey, it's kind of an awesome and overwhelming thing to think about, that, you know, people would actually view you in that way. But from where I come from, and the way I was raised by my mom and dad, it's like, "Keep your eye on the ball, brother. Do the job that you got, do it as well as you can, and then your future will be what it'll be based upon the quality of the work you do and the quality of the person people believe you to be." And so, for that, I'll just leave you this one last story about my mom, who, you know, there's not, there's not a day that goes by that I don't miss her. Not a day. Especially now, because, you know, she died in 2004. So she got to see kind of my first two years as U.S. Attorney. So she didn't get to see the next five, and she didn't get to see this circus that my life has become, right? And, and, you know, I think when people ask me all the time, and a couple of folks have said this today about being direct and being blunt and saying what's on your mind, whether it's for someone who agrees with you, like me, or this woman here who we had a disagreement on an issue today, I say what I think. And the reason I say what I think, and I say it when it comes to me, is my mother. And I'll finish with this story about her. She got sick on Valentine's Day of 2004. We got a call from the doctor, and he called me, he's a friend of mine, and he called me first before he told her. And he said, "Listen, she's got lung cancer, and it's metastasized to her brain, and she doesn't have much time. And I need to tell her tomorrow, and your dad, and I need you to be there for them because this is totally unexpected." She went to the doctor just feeling dizzy, and he did a CAT scan and he found the tumors in her brain. And so I was there with her that day when she got that news, and things, you know, went downhill really quickly, as many of you have gone through this, I'm sure, in this audience of family members, friends who have had cancer in it. When it's aggressive, it gets you quick. And so, by the first week of May, she was gravely ill. And I was at a U.S. Attorney's Conference in San Diego with all the U.S. Attorneys from around the country, and my younger brother called me in the evening out there, and he said to me, "Listen, mom's really taking a turn for the worst, and if you ever wanna talk to her again, you need to get home right away." So I got on the red-eye that night from San Diego, and I flew through the night home, and I landed at 8 o'clock in the morning at Newark Airport, and I, my brother picked me up, took me to the hospital, to St. Barnabas Hospital where my mom was. When I got there, they had already started to give her morphine because she was in a lot of pain, so she was kind of in and out of things. And then finally she kind of came to while I was sitting next to the bed watching her. And, you know, it's typical of my mother, she didn't say hello or anything, she said, "What day is it?" And I said, "It's Friday." And she said, "What time is it?" And I said, "It's 9:30 in the morning." And she said, "Go to work." And I said, "No, Mom, I decided to take the day off today to visit with you, so I'm not gonna go to work today." And she said, "Christopher, it is a workday, you go to work." And I said, "Like, let me ask you a question, Mom. Are you afraid of not getting your taxpayers' money's worth today? I will make up the time, don't worry about it." And she reached over, and I was holding her hand, and she reached over the other hand, grabbed my other hand, and she said, "Christopher, go to work, it's where you belong, there's nothing left unsaid between us." It was an amazing thing. She was giving me permission to let her go. And the reason that story is so important is because that's the way she was her whole life. My mother never saw an argument she didn't think was worth having. She never let things, as she used to say, "Sit on my chest. I'm not gonna let things sit on my chest. If I'm bothered, I'm telling you." My mother taught us our whole lives, and she used to say this line to me all the time, she goes, "Christopher, the good thing about me is, you're never gonna have to wait for a deathbed confession, you're hearing it all now." And who thought, really, when she said that to me as a kid, that that moment would come? That she would have the moment for a deathbed confession? And the beautiful thing about it was, she didn't have to. She was right. There was nothing left unsaid between us. And so when all these people, you know, whether it's media folks or commentators or whoever it is, you know, put me on the couch, and they say, "Why is he like that? Why does he say these things? Why does he say them the way he says them? Why does he do the things the way he does them? Is he angry at somebody? I'm not angry at anybody. This is the way I was brought up." And so I don't know whether, you know, America is ready for that. I have no idea. I know New Jersey is, because that's the way the people of this state are, right? And so, it was, it was great. See, this is why I love New Jersey. Because someone's talking about a fracking pipeline or something, and, you know, I don't know what the hell she's talking about, but at least she got to come here and yell at the governor, she'd go home and tell her friends that she did that too. So now, listen, I wanna thank, I wanna thank all of you for coming today. I wanna thank you for your really good questions, Republicans and Democrats. I wanna thank you for sitting in this hot gym with me for a couple of hours and going through this. But more than anything else, what I wanna thank you for, what I wanna thank you for is giving me the greatest opportunity I've ever had in my life, and that's to be the governor of the state where I was born and raised. So thank you all very much.